Oh, hi Gina.
Hi guys.
So first, uh, select board members, I got Larry and obviously Pete, or anybody else?
Matt, did you say you just have you and Larry?
Yeah, so far.
Okay.
Alright, I'll give it one more minute. For the, uh, for the record Diane, on that the town hall, there's nobody here.
Okay.
Alright, I'm gonna get started. First off, I'd like to thank everybody for participating. I know it's a Friday night, but turns out...
Lisa has arrived.
So, it sounds like Selectment down here has joined.
I guess.
We officially have a call now, so I'm gonna call the meeting to order at 6:01. And, uh, no flud of allegiance, but we'll try to, uh...
Kate Michael has arrived.
Alright, so we have four members of the board on now. So, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna turn it over to Trish first, to do a kind of rundown about what's new. Uh, then I'd like to go over the, the punch list that exists, add any punch list items we might need to add. And then, uh, we can wrap up with what we've talked about. Trish, I'll turn it over to you for the next couple minutes.
Okay, perfect. So, there was a lot of talk about the same stuff, responders, responders, um... And I'm gonna boil it, we need to know all of that. And I guess I should also say, these are public calls, so I'm just gonna give bullet points in a very broad sense. If there's something that in particular should go to a department head, or, um, I should say, a department head, and I'm gonna suggest the Board of Selectmen, this can be an action item for you to discuss, that can't go on a public call, my gut is that's what I should do, and you'll hear one of the things I'm gonna suggest later. Um, I can't go into detail because I don't think it's appropriate for the venue for public. So that being said, um, a lot of talk on testing for first responders. The state reminded us that they have a separate facility available, should we want our first responders to go there. However, if they wanna go to their own doctor, that's fine, but the test should be sent to the state. We've got a special lab that the state is using for first responders. It's not the commercial lab that's being used for the public. The reason they're doing this is they really wanna push out fast results, and they're saying they can get our results within a day or two. But it's crucial to know if our first responders are okay or not. They also said that the Anchorage Hotel in Portsmouth, New Hampshire, has been open for first responders that have been affected. Uh, there was an update on an EMS protocol that actually was pushed out to the EOC website. And when I heard that, I was nervous that both chiefs, I wanted to make sure that they got that. I did call them both, and they did get those protocols. I don't need to go into details, it's really for the first responders. They're working on getting more PPEs, and that stands for Personal Protective Equipment. If we are out, they said contact the state. They've also set aside a separate testing kit, just first responders. So we've got one group of first responders, and we've got separate kits for the public. The state said they're working with the feds, and they're putting in our request of PPEs to the state, and they're gonna push it through the FEMA acquisition process. Um, also there was a comment, if a person is working in the retirement system, and they wanna know if there's a federal waiver allowing them to work over their limit, and the response back is no, not at this time, there is no federal waiver for that. Uh, there may have newer instructions for our noon call. It seems that our Wednesday call costs eleven thousand dollars, so they're looking at different options. So the calls may end up being handled, the process may be different, and we'll know that maybe next week. Primex was on the call, they were very glad to know that there's protocols in place for the first responders. They also said if we have an infected first responder, it'll be dealt with on a case-by-case basis. Um, because they were asked a lot of questions. They just reminded us to think about liability. They said if you're sending people home to work with pay, or without pay, think of the liability depending on what you're asking them to do. Um, they're taking a very relaxed approach to any claims. They, they said just call them, and they said if you have basic questions on employment security, um, they gave a number which I don't think the public needs to know, I'll give it to Nancy. Um, Risk Management Department commented and said they bought a hold of five thousand, um, disinsected wipes, and they're sending them to the state. Another, uh, person asked a question about another rumor just like the other day, of shelter in place. And they reminded us that at this time, this has not been implemented. And they're watching other states carefully in other countries. They said they don't see it in the near future, but reminded us it's subject to change. They reminded us to track all costs, and, um, again, we've said this before, but please make sure you put COVID ID on payroll and invoices that you may have. We talked about food, somebody talked about food, and actually asked if it's safe, uh, to, uh, to take, take out food in restaurants or salad bars. And I mean, they said if the restaurants follow the protocol, it's safe, but you know, I'm gonna leave it up to you, who knows? Uh, there was a cemetery trustee that spoke, um, and this is, uh, not something that I think should be on this public call. So my plan is to call the cemetery trustee about this, and I'll call the chairman of the Board of Selectmen. Someone ask me something?
Sure. So I think somebody needs to go on mute, who's not talking right now. Everybody should be on mute except for Trish. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. So, uh, Matt, I'll call you after this and let you know what that's about, and I'll call the cemetery trustee. Um, but there was also, also a request to get better numbers, um, much to what Kate asked for the other night. Can it be broken down, I think it was Kate anyway, can it be broken down to communities, um, instead of townies? And at first, the response was, oh, it's probably really hard to do, and the guy requesting it said, well, listen, if you can break it down into communities, I mean, uh, townies, it comes from a community, so let's get some better numbers. So they're gonna look into it. Also, um, a police chief requested that dispatches be tested. Um, they asked if they're starting to run low on dispatchers. Even though they have a procedure in place of how to handle this, uh, these are extreme circumstances, and they asked if they could lock down the building and keep them there. And if they do that, how would payroll work? And the state's response was they will get back to us after speaking with legal counsel. Um, the, let me see, is that about everything? Um, I, I just wanna also say, I think, I don't know if our health agent is on the call. Um, I know he sent that stuff, and that's great. I have everything posted on the website, and my suggestion is, and this can be an action item, there's so much information out there from people. If we get calls or requests for stuff, if we can push them to our website, so they can either go to the health agent cap, or the emergency management cap, or the police, if it's something to do with the police department, so that we can kinda keep track of what's going on. And if anybody wants me to post something specific on the EOC website, or even on their website, I'll help them. Uh, I'm working in the EOC every day anyway, so reach out. And that's it in a nutshell.
Alright, great. Thank you for that update. Um, I wanted to first note that, um, for those who are on those calls, on, on recent calls, you should understand, as we've talked about before, the tension level is high throughout the country right now, and we had one of those days here in Duke. So I won't go into any more detail, but, uh, both chiefs, I think, can, can tell people later if, if need be, but just be vigilant, because people are, uh, losing patience, and there are things that are coming to light, um, that maybe have nothing to do with COVID, but the fact that they're, uh, kind of, uh, cooked up. So that list, from last time, um, off the top of my head, Diane can, uh, can keep me honest here, but off the top of my head, I believe there was an action item. That was a sign, myself and Nancy, from Chief Elquidino regarding, and Trish, I think covered it a little bit, uh, in regards to, what if we have a firefighter working for us in the call department? They get exposed, they're on a fourteen-day quarantine, and they're missing work? And Nancy said something this afternoon, Nancy, you wanna talk anymore about what you said out as far as Primex? Is Nancy there? Okay, I thought Nancy was there, but the, uh, the email went out, and Primex is gonna have us fill out forms, we're looking at workers' compensation right now. At the same time, if Chief Elquidino is there, I think you are going to call around other departments to get their respective, because I'm not sure you got any response yet. He, he, yes, I think that, it was what, what I, what I was told, other than, this is evolving every day. Surrounding departments such as Blastout, and then switching to twenty-four-hour shifts, not allowing, no one, except those members that are on the shift, to respond to medical calls, to try to curtail any insurance claims, Chiefs thing is doing the same. Uh, the other five chiefs that I spoke to ended up, the, that, that would be again, uh, the talent to reach out to the insurance company, is according to Chief, warrants the chief true. If a employee believes they're in contact, but they're not positive, if they can get the note from their doctor, the primary care, stating that they need the quarantine of seven or fourteen days, they must submit that with the incident report, and that's on the Nancy said does, everybody. The Primax, and the Primax will pay one hundred percent for any employee on their second job. Now, I haven't seen nothing in writing on that half. Okay, well, that's a start. Um, well, uh, this one is going to be more of a complicated answer. So, we'll continue to collect information on that one, or just hypothetical right now. God forbid it should be reality, but it's hypothetical right now. Right, because I haven't, because I haven't, I've seen that, just quick, that you and I talked about, uh, other than COVID-19, if they were injured at a fire? Or at another type of incident, they would be covered one hundred percent on both jobs. This, this confusion is only for this COVID-19. Okay, good, then, again, uh, we had that in writing, we had that in writing, right? Alright, uh, Diane, can you refresh my memory on the rest of the list?
Yeah, just give me a minute, I'm trying to help Nancy turn mute off, hold on. Hold on one second, I'll be right back.
I believe, alright, while you're doing that, um, we only, you know, we obviously have our first responders still active, uh, but what we don't, what we should remember too is, because it's public safety, we're keeping the transfer station open, so, transfer station is open, we've limited, uh, what people can bring, we've limited out-of-town stuff. Anything else, Pete, that is on your mind at the, uh, transfer station, would you, uh, to tackle, anything coming up?
Uh, I do have an issue, uh, with, uh, our board, I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to go to all of those going, uh, uh, speaking up, so, are they gonna get paid in time?
It's very hard to understand him.
I'm sorry, what was that, Diane?
I, it's very hard to understand what he's saying, Pete.
Well, I think what he said is, you're, because of no cardboard, Pete, you wanna reduce your numbers better on shift, right? Yes, yeah, okay, so the board has to kind of weigh in on that, because as we've been doing with some other departments, if we tell these guys they have to go home, essentially we have to pay them. So, would it be board, I'm just asking board members, what are your thoughts on this?
I have, Larry, I know what you're, Larry, I know what you're with.
No issue, yes, one will come back. Well, I believe that, I believe, I believe you know. It would fall under a category, if we were closing all, uh, all that's not, so he's either work the home or the area exposed. If we're closing the cardboard shut, technically we're closing the work area. Which means, I think, they would fall under the, um, decision of the board to pay those who are unable to work because of those, their work states, and we would pay them for their non-revenue potential.
Yeah, it's kind of a, we've kind of set a little bit of a precedent already, so, I guess, I guess what you're hearing, Pete, from the board is, you know, work out your schedule as easy, and then, we're gonna have to get time cards from, um, everybody, but the time card from the person who's displayed needs to say COVID-19 on it.
Yeah, absolutely. Alright, anything else with the current person?
Uh, no, that is it as of right now.
Okay, great, thank you. Diane, on your, uh, list, do you have that yet?
Uh, I'm, yeah, hang on, so, let's see, the, one other action item the board has to deal with is whether or not to clean, uh, the building after it's been used, as of like today.
Yeah, personally, uh, and obviously each board member weigh in, but I don't wanna get into the habit of cleaning this building every, you know, you know, every time we have a small group in there. One of the reasons we have the place closed is so we don't have to, uh, worry about exposure, but I, I wouldn't wanna clean it again for a while.
Who's actually on there now?
We had a recount today.
Oh, but I believe Mary Jo was cleaning the surfaces. Their surfaces were cleaned before we came in, and I believe Mary Jo was using the, um, antiseptic wipes that we had gotten from the chiefs to wipe down the surfaces that we used, so that they would still be clean. And is anyone...
...in the food pantry. Okay, 'cause once, once the doors are closed, technically it looks like you have three days and everything, and they're guys anyway. That's the longest it's been seen to live on surfaces, it doesn't mean it'll change.
Yeah, I think it was four grand to clean it last time, so I'm not interested in doing that again for a while.
I would agree, and I don't think it's necessary either.
Right.
And the only ones going in to be individual officers are, are town employees who need to go in there to grab mail or do something else, and they're responsible for, uh, sanitizing the surfaces that they touch when they come in. Such as the, uh, tax collector, for example.
Well, I'm good with that for now.
Alright, it sounds like we're, uh, good with that action item. What was next, Diane?
Okay, okay, um, Nancy, did you get back on the phone? Evidently not. I told her to hang up and try again, couldn't figure out how to unmute her phone for some reason.
Can you, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, alright, so now I know, I'm, I'm gonna mute it now.
No, I think they need to talk to you about compensation.
Yeah, I don't have a...
Yeah, I think we're good, we got that one. Alright, can just move on down the list, I think we got it.
Okay, alright. So the other thing you wanted to look at was, uh, the Selectmen to consider long-term response to situation.
I'm sorry, one more time on that one?
It was, um, Road Agent Pevero suggested that you come up with a long, there were different, uh, plans, you know, one week, one month, that type of thing?
Yeah, so what's everybody's thoughts on that one?
I think Matt could probably look at a... We are... Next one to look at, is that's the most likely thing to come next, if it does, and what that would mean to the town, and start there.
Chairman, Matt, can I talk?
Go ahead, Trish.
Yeah, go ahead, sorry.
Okay, thanks. So, um, the emergency management has a slew of plans that are already in place. Um, we've got...
That's what I was hoping.
Yes, and, and obviously it's a big book, actually, Mike Pevero and I were talking about it for a little bit of time, as well as the police and fire chief. It may have to be, we have to slide it into what's happening now, because clearly, nobody knew that this was gonna happen. But there is a long-term, uh, plan in place for whatever we have to do in various categories. And we now that, to the fire station almost every day anyway, so I'll continue to work with Larry and the chiefs on it if we ha, and, and Mike, uh, if we have to change it somehow, but we have one in place.
Okay. So, um, well, let's just keep that updated and active, because, uh, in case anybody hasn't noticed, uh, we're inventing new terminology now that didn't even exist. Like the, uh, you know, shelter in place is going away, and now it's stay-home order. So, that, New Hampshire isn't on that list yet, but I'd be willing in a couple of days, we will be. But, um, we'll have to, you know, I don't know what that means as far as our police department enforcing that or anything, so we'll see what happens there.
Alright, next, please, Diane?
Um, I think Trish answered this, EMD to research secondary shelter for first responders. I believe she dealt with that earlier when she said that they have a place, uh, the Anchorage. In Portsmouth?
Correct.
Okay. That's it for the list.
Alright, does anybody have anything that needs to be added to this list? Matt, can you hear me? Go ahead. Yeah, I, I don't have something for the list, I just have information for the Board of Selectmen on what the fire department's gonna implement on Monday. So whenever you open it up in discussion, just let me know. Yeah, go ahead. Alright, we're gonna follow suit, effective, I'm gonna give an administrative order, effective, uh, Monday, seven AM. We're gonna curtail the amount of respondents, so the boards are aware. While the duty crew is in the station from seven AM to seven PM, only those two individuals are gonna respond to all EMS calls. All other calls, we're gonna do an all call, all, all available members. And if those individuals need assistance on that EMS call, we will open it up to all members. We are also gonna shut down the fire station like other, uh, departments are doing, but I think that might have to go to the Board of Selectmen, that the only individuals that are allowed in the fire station will be essential personnel, personnel, such as the duty guys during the day, the chief, EMD. Uh, we're not gonna allow individuals to come in and visit, like they've been doing, and coming in and having lunch. We're trying to curtail the amount of personnel entering into the fire station, as long as the Board of Selectmen don't have a problem with that. Yeah, I ain't pressing on anybody else on the board. Yeah. Yeah, I think that's a good policy. Okay, it will, uh, just so you know, it'll take effect Monday. Thank you. Thanks. So, anybody else, anything else?
Um, Matt, this is Sean Ford, I'm gonna speak.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so I know this is really at the, probably the bottom of the list, I just wanted to shed some light on the reality, um, that, that the, um, you know, the citizens, and also the contractors, that probably not stop building, and maybe there is some requests. Um, and I'm, and I fully have, um, fire chiefs back, and I'm on the same page. Um, that's the order that was issued, so that's what we're enforcing. Um, but just to throw it out there, you know, of course, the potential revenue that is being lost as a result of that order, but also enforcement mechanism, you know, what is it, where is it? Um, and the short-term model is that we're not accepting any new permits, right? So, does that mean that all construction immediately shall cease? And, and if so, once again, who's gonna enforce that? And then, the long-term, just consider that we don't, the governor does not issue a stay-at-home order. Um, on the evening news this evening, he said that he had no intentions of doing so, because he felt that what we were doing so far was shutting up the buildings and schools, um, was mitigating the, the problem. Whether or not we agree with that, a different story. So, long-term considerations, we'll be accepting permits, um, electronically, and then inspections performed with the Fire and Building Department discretion. I know that's the model that most towns in New Hampshire are doing currently. We just wanted to throw it out there for consideration in the near future, that's it.
Yeah, thank you, uh, for reminding me of that one. Um, oh, Chief, go ahead. Just, just so you know, just to jump on, shot they curtailed, uh, the question that came up today, I had the contractor call me up, the propane contractor. Uh, according to the contractor, he is considered essential personnel because he supplies propane to the residents. Uh, he explained to me that he does not believe the town can shut down permits. I mean, he, he, his feeling is, we should be, they should be able to go online, get the permit, and inspection should be done. He doesn't have a problem not coming to the fire station, or to the building department, pulling, pulling a permit, but he believes that if somebody needs propane, that is an emergency. Yeah, so I think, uh, this is an example of things we're learning as we go along in a fluid situation. So, what I would say is, to the board is, let's target Monday for this call, to make kind of the final decision, because I'm in the process of getting us a legal opinion on this. I tend to agree with Sean saying, that, uh, is the propane contractor, for that matter, that we probably have overstepped our bounds, so we just need to kind of restructure what our order was, uh, to essentially get the same benefit to the citizens that we're looking for, but at the same time, not, not, uh, run afoul of the law. Uh, so, what I'd like to propose to the board tonight is, let's hold off, keep things the way they are for right now, and get through a couple of days. Uh, Monday night, I hope to have that legal opinion, and we can kind of re-vote on what, uh, our policy's gonna be, if that sounds okay? Matt, just quick, from the fire department's standpoint, all the contractors can get permits online, unfortunately, it's just the building department. Unfortunately, it's just the building department that they cannot get their permits. And the inspectors for the fire department, which is Mr. Ford and myself, we talked, all right, today after I spoke with Shante. We have no problem going out, doing a propane inspection, doing a smoke inspection, because technically, we're not touching nothing. We're doing visual inspections, so we should be fine. But like I said, the biggest thing is on the building side, I believe, that it's actually cutting off the building department's hands. Yeah, so, but that's good to know. I think, like I said, there are things we can do to, you know, keep within the spirit of what we're trying to protect people from, but at the same time, not to run afoul of the law. So let's reconvene on this issue Monday, once we have some more information. But just the board of selectmen, think that sounds okay?
Yes, yeah.
That's fine. All right, sounds good. Thank you, Shante and chief, for working together on that. We'll get you an answer. So, okay, anything else? Yeah, Matt, just so you might want to mention what I said to you earlier, Monday. Yes, I don't have any specific stuff that sounds like Larry on a treasure trove of, uh, uh, clothes and stuff like that coming Monday, I guess, Larry. I actually have to go pick it up and take it. And I think, I think the chief is going to put on a call for donations of hand sanitizer, like pretty much every department in the area, chief's starting to do that. So if anybody's got any, kind of leaving on the doorstep, I think, so. All right, so anything else? All right, again, I appreciate everybody taking time out of your nights to jump on this call. Hopefully, we'll be quick and painless like this, but if necessary. And everybody, stay safe and stay healthy over the weekend. And we'll talk more on Monday, my most everything, definitely self-care, if you feel the weekend. Like I jokingly said, my social life is not that interesting right now. So if you need to text or call me, feel free to do so over the weekend. And I probably speak for the whole board on that page, so. All right, have a good weekend, everybody. We'll have to contact.